Dr. Ferguson, would you mind? Dr. Ferguson is the president of Bevel State and he's going to walk us through his recommendation.
Thank you for taking our recommendation under consideration. I believe you perceive some information about what we're requesting. We actually had a large number of computers that were under lease with IBM Credit LLC. The lease expired at the end of January. We had started two months before then negotiating with IBM about their possible buyout of these computers. They're approximately three years old. They get 30 percent of our fleet of computers for the college are used primarily for educational course delivery and instructional purposes. Initially IBM came back to us and said they wanted around $300,000 for these computers if we were to buy out, you know, the computers since our lease has ended. We were able to negotiate them. Once I got to the college, we negotiated down to 200,000. The computers are valued at $800,000. The life expectancy for the computers is 24 to 36 months beyond this purchase price and we're on an average rotation of five to six years for our computers. In essence, by doing this, we're currently paying $22,170 and 22 cents a month on the lease. We continue to do that, of course, in January and February even though the lease has ended. If we have the ability to purchase these computers at this price, ultimately, we're going to save about $532,085 over the next 24 months. So for us, it seemed like a very wise business decision to purchase them. Our only other alternative is to continue leasing them at that rate, which would be not very cost effective, or to return the computers and there is cost involved in returning the computers back to IBM. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about what we're proposing.
Was there any IT support in the current lease arrangement?
No, there's not. It was primarily just for the hardware and the use of that. All IT support is coming internally from the college. So we would not be giving up any sort of substantial support in regards to software or keeping them running or anything like that. That was all part of the negotiated contract. That was our responsibility. So we're really just talking about the machine.
What about the lifecycle of the software?
Of the software itself?
Yeah.
We will have the capability from an enterprise perspective to update that software. I've been assured by our director of IT that the machines can handle that. They are very powerful Lenovo machines and should again, yes, estimate, and I know that this has been reviewed in the system office as well, machines should have another life expectancy of around 24 to 36 months. But yes, we will have the capability to update the software. We will not need IBM support to do that. That's something we would have done on our.
It says the computers are still under warranty February 10. How long will warranty last on those?
The warranty was to expire on February, the end of February, the warranty will actually expire. But these are still the newest computers that we have within our fleet for the college. So that really doesn't seem to be troublesome for us. Again, most colleges are running a rotation of about five to six years on a machine now. That has improved. I mean, I know just a few years ago, we were doing about three years, but technology is not advancing that much faster for the needs that we have for the capabilities of these machines.
What are your plans on is the lifecycle of these run out moving forward with replacement? Do you do it in partial packets or altogether?
Well, our plans are this will give us on this, again, this is 30 percent of our capacity. We'll have another 24 to 36 months. We'll have that initial savings. With that savings, we probably will explore entering another lease agreement to start another cycle of computers. And then we'll have to make an evaluation once that ends in three years, depending on due to the degree of what decision we'll make at that time, either to purchase them out, like we're suggesting today for these, or to do something different. It is a constant rotation, so we work our technology plan to ensure that we're constantly moving those computers in and out. But we do have some that are, you know, approaching seven years old, which is way beyond. And this will give us the capability with the savings to look at a way to update entirely and another lease approach. That would make sense.
Appreciate the creativeness and savings of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ferguson. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Good. I'd like to call on Dr. Rothmer. He will present the item on instructional sites and determinations.
Thank you. Vice President Thompson, members of the board, Chancellor Heinrich. Each year, we bring to you site requests by colleges that would be requesting additional sites. This year, we have two additional site requests and there's information that was provided to you. The first one, Shelton State Community College is requesting the addition as an instructional site of Tuscaloosa Career and Technical Academy to be able to offer two additional welding courses and this facility would be charged or provided free of charge. Shelton State offers welding classes and admitting sheets fall. Those courses are full. This would provide the opportunity for additional students to take those classes and then potentially in the spring, if spots open up, be able to enroll as well. Sneed State Community College is requesting the addition of Marshall Technical School, again, to offer two welding courses and this facility would also be offered free of charge. And this would be able to be able to offer the welding courses that are part of their industrial maintenance technology program. So therefore, they would not have to add welding capacity at their site as opposed to being able to partner with this institution, which they have already a strong relationship with. Are there any questions about those two instructional site requests?
Great. Thank you, Dr. Rothmer. Appreciate that. Good. I'd like to move now to the orientation item for the month. And we wanted to provide for you an overview of athletics and the impact athletics has on our community colleges. And I just, from an editorial standpoint, just so you know where I stand on athletics, not that that may be important, but I really believe athletics is an important part of the life of our system. I think it adds a level of involvement on both our student and our student athletes that really changes the atmosphere and the dynamics on a campus. And so I have, me forever, have been very, very supportive of athletics. But I think it's important to understand how athletics works at each of the community colleges. So I'm going to ask Dr. Exley if maybe you would, you and Dean, certainly introduce your guests and if you would take us through this.
Hi, my name is Dean Myrick. I'm the commissioner of the Alabama Community College Conference and I'd like to thank you for having us today as we're able to showcase our great athletic programs, coaches, and student athletes, past and present of the Alabama Community College Conference. I would like to personally thank Dr. Heinrich and all of our presidents here today for their continued support. We and I are indeed fortunate to have such a great conference that enjoys much success on and off the court and field. At this time, I'm going to introduce Dr. Robert Exley, who's the current president of the Alabama Community College Conference Executive Committee. He's also the president of Sneed State Community College and he's also the southeastern presidential representative to the National Junior College Athletic Association Board of Directors. So I'll introduce Dr. Robert Exley.
Chancellor, if you don't mind, I'm just going to stand here. I want to get to our presidents, who are going to give you the substance of everything. I wanted to just kind of lay the context for you on just a couple of things. Community college athletics have been part of my life since daybreak. I went to Houston, Texas, and our eighth grade basketball coach took us to San Jacinto College to watch Ollie Taylor play basketball and Jeff Halber. Jeff Halber went on to break and San Jack has had a number of NBA All-Stars, all the way back to Hall of Famer Thomas Henderson. And it just had been everything we do. When I was at San Jacinto College, I was a student. Roger Clemens pitched for San Jacinto College. Since then, Andy Pettit has pitched for San Jacinto. That's just an example. And the handout we gave you on the front shows you four of our most distinguished alumnus. There are many, many, many more than that. I hope they're very recognizable to you. Real quickly, the Alabama Community College Conference is a separate 501 standalone C3. IRS requires that from us. The members, colleges, their presidents make up the board of members. And then we have to follow strict guidelines and rules like any other nonprofit. Up until, what, Dean, three years ago, you could use NJCAA's federal tax ID number, but there were some changes in IRS law and so we had to incorporate ourselves. And so that was a lengthy process and I feel really good about our constitutional bylaws we have in place that guide us in the way we follow things and we're very, very strict with adherence to legal issues. If you want to see the bylaws, they're pretty thick and NJCAA is even more thin. The other thing I wanted to mention real, real quickly is at the NJCAA level, we're a member of them. They have 500 colleges across the nation. It's the second largest collegiate athletic association. Obviously, the largest is NCAA. Does not include schools in California. They have their own separate athletic conference, California, somewhere around 107 community colleges, so they do a lot of things independently and different, including in their own honor societies and stuff. But when we look at across the nation, you can see in the handout where the regions are. We're in Region 22. The other thing is, boy, it's amazing who has played golf at a junior college. You know, Roger Spava started a two-year college, New Mexico Military Institute before he went to the Naval Academy. Nolan Ryan, a personal friend from when I was in Houston, was at Albert Junior College. And what a gentleman and jewel. Sam Cassell, you may remember him in the NBA. Spencer Haywood. It just goes on and on a dick for meal. So we know that quality athletes come to our two-year colleges and they go on and achieve things. More recently, Cam Newton, as you know, is a junior college product, as well as Aaron Rodgers is a junior college product. And not in the Super Bowl that just ended, but last year on that play at the end, they were throwing to a young man named Walker. So I think he played basketball for you guys. And the guy tackling him played for another junior college in the Super Bowl and he played. So we believe athletics makes a difference. At Sneed State, real quickly, and I'll just be done with this, it's our best recruiting tool. This current spring term, 11 percent of our credit hours come from athletes. Many of our athletes are not on scholarship and that's how it benefits us financially. The thing that's amazing to me is even non-scholarship athletes can end up getting scholarships onto the next level many times. And we work really hard to make sure that happens. We have some strict limits scholarship roster spots by the NJCAA. But beyond that, you can have as many non-scholarship players as possible. How does that benefit the college? They have to be full-time students. If I had more housing, I could fill more housing up. You'll find textbooks. They really do. So here's the best part. About 90 percent of those non-scholarship students, once they come to the college, stay graduate, even if they don't finish that process. Our fall to spring retention is always critical, right? Critical. This fall to spring, 98 percent of our scholarship athletes came back and are eligible, and 91 percent are going to apply. So it makes a huge difference for us with the community. They're engaged in all kinds of service. Our athletes raise a lot of money and our coaches raise a lot of money. We have a new 28 passenger bus. The coaches, selling ads, raise all the money via the bus. And so we expect them to go out and produce resources. So bottom line, probably from six years ago to now, we've turned it about a $200,000 a year deficit to about a $250,000 a year plus. And it's because of those other athletes and their friends and all that come to the college and want to be there. The most important thing to me is our region, which is our conference, 67 academic All-American players. That's very, very significant. And if you look at the teams, I didn't even add up the number of teams because academic All-American as a team or individual. What's interesting is to be an academic All-American, you have to complete a minimum of 45 credit hours with a 3.6 or higher achievement. So it's not something that's handed out just like one semester. So our athletes work hard for that. The NCAA has moved on and really had some bigger expectations on academic success prior to transferring. And the last thing I'll mention to you, it's critical that our students graduate at our two-year colleges. We just recently analyzed the data from the students who started in the fall of 2007. And so you look out, 150 percent of the time, which would be three years and then out to six years. What we found of all the students at Sneed State that transferred to university, 51 percent who did so before they graduated went ahead and got another degree. 51 percent. Of the ones who graduated before they transferred, 98 percent. We emphasize graduation. Our athletes have to graduate to transfer, so I think it's one of the most important things that we have. Dr. Gary Branch is going to present. He's probably the dean of our conference, been around. His college and my college are very similar, except he's rich and has a lot of children. And then Dr. Vicki Corollis, I did pretty good. We'll talk to you a little bit about handful. We have some awesome athletic programs here. We're very, very proud of and we want you to be proud of. Gary?
Thank you, Dr. Exley. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I promise to be brief. If you've had a long day and with your drives home, you will have an even longer day. I do want to share some interesting information with you about college athletics in general and particularly two-year college athletics. Going to ask the question, why do colleges, universities, and community colleges offer athletic programs? There are 507 two-year colleges that offer athletic programs for their students and communities this year. A total of 1,006, this is kind of complicated. My technology level obviously is not at the level of our projection. A total of 1,628 NJCAA and NCAA colleges and universities offered athletic programs for their students. 507 two-year colleges. And within the 1,628, that includes the 507 community colleges. Now then, out of that 1,628 colleges in the United States, only 20 colleges and universities made a profit from their athletic programs last year. Think about that. Think about it. 1,628 colleges and only 20 of them made a profit? In Alabama, only two of the colleges and universities in this state made money last year. And you can all guess who they are. Faulkner State and University of Alabama. Only two colleges in Alabama made profit. That includes South Alabama, Jacksonville State, Troy State. Two made a profit. The rest, over 1,500 colleges and universities, lost from a few dollars to millions of dollars through their athletic programs. In Alabama, 27 four-year colleges offer athletics on their campuses. Over 400 high schools in Alabama have athletic programs. Now, I know that only two colleges in Alabama made a profit last year. Out of the 400 high school programs this past year, I would suspect, those figures are not available. I tried to get them. But I would suspect you could count in high school athletics, the number of high schools that made a profit at athletics last year would be fewer than a dozen out of that 400. And when you look at the Hoovers and the Spain Parks and the larger schools in the state, the Spanish Fort, perhaps those schools are making a profit. The figure's not known. This year, 18 of our system colleges offer athletic programs for their students and community. So I ask the question again, why do colleges, universities, and two-year colleges offer athletics? When the numbers are so overwhelmingly clear that you don't, directly, you can't measure it in dollars and cents as the bottom line. So there must be other reasons why we do this. There must be other reasons why you will allow, as our board, our community colleges, to have a vibrant athletic program in our state. Why have 1,628 presidents and governing boards provided athletic opportunities to their students? This is an important fact about two-year colleges in Alabama. Remember, in Alabama, current policy only allows our two-year colleges to offer tuition, fees, and book waivers for our student athletes. These tuition waivers, and this is the key point, these tuition waivers are really not expenditures. Now let me explain that. When an athlete comes to Faulkner and any of our two-year colleges on campus, it is a transaction this way. They don't pay their tuition. It's waived. It's put over in this side of the books and the bottom line is, it's zero. It's zero. So perhaps, and I haven't asked this question, but perhaps the two-year colleges in Alabama may be an exception to the numbers I shared with you already. Our student athletes must pay their own room, board, and other related expenses to attend college. Another factor to consider in the Alabama two-year college system, I know this is true at Faulkner and I'm reasonably confident that it's true throughout our system. At Faulkner State, we do not have full-time coaches. All of our coaches' contracts are instructor contracts. They must teach and their coaching is an additional responsibility as part of that contract. We don't have coaching stipends in Alabama. We don't have supplements. They have to teach. And in those instances where that's not true, we may have some part-time coaches that assist whenever it's necessary. So if you don't have the investment in money upfront and if you're using instructors to coach and part-time coaches in those few instances where for smaller sports where there may not be a coach available, I would think, I know at Faulkner, based on the other information I'm going to provide, our two-year colleges make money in Alabama. You may not see it in the bottom line, but you see it in so many other areas that I'd like to share with you very quickly. So the question again is why? Let's look at student enrollment. Why are athletics important to our student enrollment? The American Association of Community Colleges noted, "College athletic programs provide a campus life experience and help attract new students." Listen, if presidents are using their scholarships wisely, you offer scholarships in areas that, in athletes and leadership and dance and the fine arts, you offer those scholarships in areas that you know you're going to get other students to attend because of the publicity and the notoriety you receive from signing one of their athletes, from signing one of their SGA. At Faulkner, and I suspect this is true throughout the system, all SGA presidents, valedictorians, salutatorians, editors of their newspapers, other key leadership positions on those campuses, they get automatic scholarships to attend. It's not just athletics, but it's the others. And if you use your scholarships wisely, you're going to attract other students to sit in your classroom and pay their tuition. Recent studies show that the athletic programs have a significant impact on the increased enrollment of non-athletic students. That is true at Faulkner State. Another, other factors to consider in student enrollment, athletics improve your retention. As Dr. Exley just pointed out, our athletes must graduate before they can compete at the next level. So retention is improved. Our coaches have to make them have study halls so they can do extra work, make up work. It increases retention. We've got 149 athletes on our campus. When you take those 149 athletes and they must graduate and they must make a certain grade point average, you can see how this skews the other statistics as far as general overall grade point averages and general overall retention. Student athletes add to the cultural and ethnic diversity of the college population. Some examples. Student athletes include ethnic minorities. It makes your campus more diverse. It includes first-generation college students oftentimes, academically disadvantaged, and those with lower socioeconomic status. And I was doing this study and putting these statistics together, I realized, hey, this is describing me. I'm from a first-generation college student. My dad was an orphan and school worker. We lived on the wrong side of town. I had a two-year college that I had an opportunity to play athletics up in the Smoky Mountains of Tennessee. There were no public two-year colleges in Alabama in 1965 or 61 when I graduated from high school. So I know, standing here before you today, that if it were not for two-year college athletics and the little blond-haired cheerleader named Judy, I was never going here today as a college president offering you my perspective on college athletics. College athletics impact our enrollments. They address gender inequity. Every athlete on our campus, there has to be a male and female equivalent to meet Title IX qualification. Another way student enrollment impacts our colleges, it increases the full-time enrollment of full-time students. What's the financial impact of these students being on our campuses? Athletic programs and increase institutional enrollment of full-time students benefit institutions through increased revenues to the college through state FTE-based funding formulas. Athletic programs increase residence hall and student and meal plan revenue. We have residence halls at Faulkner. The tuitions don't cover their residence hall room rate nor their meal plan. We make money off of that. What's the economic impact of having athletics on our community college campuses? Recent studies show that athletic programs at rural institutions, and this is not an Alabama study, but I suspect Alabama is no different from this, and this might, Bob, be a good study that we want to do. Recent studies show that athletic programs at rural institutions accounted for 15 to 30 percent of the total institution's economic impact on the city or town in which they are located. Think about that. In these rural areas, how important an athletic program is not only to the college and the community, but the kind of economic impact that it can have in those local communities. College and community involvement is another positive factor of having college athletics on our two-year colleges. Two-year college athletes in Alabama, it increases student involvement and it generates more community support. Every athletic team at Faulkner, and I'm sure this is true across our system, they have civic responsibilities. At Faulkner, our athletes go to the veterans home and the nursing home and visit them and sing Christmas carols with our choir group that goes. Athletic programs are one of the ties that bind our colleges to our communities. Listen, when you can't get press any other way unless it's bad press, you're going to get good press if you have an athletic program. The TV stations cover your athletic scores and results, the newspapers. It's, in many instances, unfortunately, it's the only good press we get because of the nature of what journalism is today. If it's not bad, they generally won't report it. And it gives our community colleges athletics on campus another reason to embrace the college. It ties us to our communities. Do you know in this merger consolidation that we're going through down in our region, I've met with, I guess, 10 or 12 different groups. I shared that with you last time. In every community, every superintendent's, mayor's, college employees, faculty, staff, people at the service station, when I filled up for gas... up for gas in Bruton, and, uh, the state, for some reason, their wife worked at the college. You know what the number-one question that I'm asked, number, there are two questions that I'm asked about these mergers? What are you going to do with your name? And the second question is, are we going to be able to keep our athletic programs? That's how important these little communities and small communities identify with their local community colleges. The Community College League or the California Commission on Athletics lists one of the key aspects of community college sports in California, and I can say without any intelligent contradictions, that the same is true in Alabama. Community college sports provide a shared unifying experience on those campuses that offer athletics in our system. Let's talk about student athletics success, and I'll be very, because Vicky, I think, is going to pitch on you. Student athletic success provides student athletes leadership, academic, and expanded educational opportunities. If, by taking these athletes, the diversity of these athletes, who probably would not have a college opportunity in the first place, they come to our colleges, they play athletics, they learn leadership skills, they learn teamwork skills, and they learn how to study because one, number one, unfortunately, motivation for them is to play athletics. But if, in order to play athletics, you've got to study. And so, student athletes, it's a fundamental lesson. It's goals worth achieving that will be obtained through effort, hard work, sacrifice, and teamwork. Did you know this? Last year, 58,531 student athletes competed on 3,461 NJCAA teams in 28 different sports. A record number of student athletes received academic honors, having met the minimum 3.6 grade point average here in Alabama. Did you know this? Last year, 18 community colleges, conference athletic teams were named NJCAA All-American, and of course, you know that, Bob shared that with you just a moment ago. 67 of our athletes last year received academic student athletic award, not to mention the number who went on from their colleges to get scholarships to play ball at four-year university. And this is another interesting statistic. Last year, the average GPA of the student athletes in the ACCA students, NJCAA All-Academy Team, their overall GPA was the 3.27, that's a B average. In surveys distributed in Arizona, and I'm coming to a close, in surveys distributed, a recent study in athletics for the two-year colleges there, 100% of the respondents agreed that their athletic programs support the mission and values of those institutions. I went back after studying this and looking at that, and I looked back in our catalog at our current mission statement, and our current mission statement agrees with this principle. They also state that the program fits the mission of the colleges to develop responsible and educated citizens, connect the colleges to external, to the external community, community, enhance the diversity of the college community, bring positive local, state, and national recognition of our colleges. I just gave you about a 45-minute sermon in about 10 minutes amount. Athletics, from a personal standpoint, I benefited. I'm a, I, I am a supporter. You guys, I know, are supporters. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer any of those, but I know you're probably, and this, this is, this is an interesting slide, and I won't, I won't read that to you. Look at the number of national championships we've won, just in that short a period. What makes that figure even more outstanding is that, as I pointed out to you earlier, our athletes do not get room and board. They only get tuition and book waivers. In these other schools nationally and in our region, those two-year athletes generally are getting tuition, room, board, and tuition. That makes those national championships even more remarkable. Thank you for allowing me to have this time to share with you something that I personally believe in rich home.
I am as passionate as Gary is about athletics, although I might not come across quite as strong as he does. And Gary, we forgot to mention that we're also not allowed the scholarship international athletes. They pay their own way if they come to us, and if you've ever heard of Frederick Joffe Son? He was a Wallace State golfer. He came to us, sweetened him, he paid his own way, and I dare say that's workforce development. Because last time he came and visited us with his three little children in tow, he was making well over a million dollars that year. Had not even got through about three months of, of his year. Um, I'm, I'm going to talk just very briefly, much more briefly than Gary, about the intellectual, academic, and social, personal development of students. So, you'll hear some of the same things, but athletics is, it, it is important to have a wide range of, of campus life for, for all of our students. And the opportunity for someone who is gifted as an athlete to pay their way through college with those skills that they have on court, or on field, or whatever the case may be, is a gift to them academically. I dare say that everything that we do is workforce development. If you know Craig Kimbrel with the Atlanta Braves, um, you know, he's over the millions now, well, he was a starting pitcher for Wallace Spurs. He went on our first championship team out to Grand Junction, so, uh, that's, that's very important to us. So, the soft skills that are in demand by our employers are listed here. Communication, motivation, leadership, teamwork, creativity, and problem-solving, time management, ability to work under pressure, decision-making, and accepting responsibility. I would propose to you that participation on an athletic team develops every one of those skills. Vincent Tinto is a renowned community college researcher. I can remember reading his books in the, uh, early eighties when I was in college, and he has always stated that the research indicates, and it, it proves, that the number-one reason a student will stay in college is that they make a connection with someone. They're engaged with someone, uh, and, and in the campus life, and athletics achieves that. Uh, the other day, I was standing in the Coliseum, we had a heated basketball game going on with State Community College during COVID coming, and we won, by the way. But I was there talking with our athletic director, and we were talking about some kind of fundraiser that one of the, the teams was having, and I, I stood next to him, I said, "Could you imagine Coach Saban standing here talking about his players having to go out and raise money to pay for a tournament trip that was important to them?" But all of our teams do that, and I think that experience and having to be responsible, if you want to go to, on a, on a particular trip somewhere, then you raise money to do that, it teaches, it, it helps to become a well-rounded individual. So, all of our athletes carry a full-time load. Uh, we have study halls for them in groups and, uh, individual teams as well as cross teams. Their coaches are mentoring with them, as, as well as their team advisors are mentoring them. In addition to their full-time loads, they also have practice every day. Uh, early and late, they'll practice before school, and they, you know, they have to do their weight routines and training routines before class, and then they go and practice after class. Then, of course, they have to have their game schedules, uh, and their travel. Uh, they're involved with a cohort of students. It's just like a cohort of students coming into a health program or to a welding program. They move to that program as a group, so that helps with the engagement and the connection to the college life. And I dare say that all coaches set very high expectations for their teams and for individual players, so they have to strive to live up to those, uh, high expectations. So, they have to display, um, some discipline in, in accomplishing that. And certainly, their parents are involved. Sometimes, we want them to be less involved, uh, the health and comfort parents, but their parents are involved in their, in their academic life, and that's very important. So, Vincent Tinto says that, you know, you, you, making connections and being engaged helps keep people in college, keep students in college. It's important to us to retain students to graduation, to develop them academically and intellectually, and to develop their, uh, their soft skills as a, as an individual. So, our grad, and this is Wallace State's graduation rate, our graduation rate for all of our teams was almost 100%. That's this past year. Okay? Next. Uh, of those that, uh, graduate, of those that graduated or transferred, those are the number, the percentage of the teams that, that got scholarships, the percentage of the team members who got scholarships to universities. That's a pretty high scholarship rate. Okay? And of those who, who were on the, you know, in this sophomore cohort, those are the numbers who transferred to the university. So, I think that athletics accomplishes a great deal. I wish that we could provide a coach for every 25 students that we have. Our graduation rates across the college would be much, much higher than this. And then, those are our GPAs for all of our teams. They're very, uh, they're high-performing students, and, and when there's, uh, a student that's struggling with a subject, we have the infrastructure there and the support systems to help them. And that's all. Questions? Thank you.
Any, any questions for Dr. Exley or any of the, the speakers?
One thing I would like to do, if, uh, our member presidents are here with athletics, if you guys could stand up so we can get a look at you. Athletics has been a big part of, thank you, our heritage and history. Uh, I think LBDW is a good example. Herb, a few years ago, worked with his foundation to add student housing, and this fall, he's, he's worked with us looking at how to recruit more, uh, non-scholarship players, and I think your student housing is about 95% full, and your credit hour enrollment's up 10 or 12%. So, we use these as one of the most important things in the world to grow them. Gary and Vicky both mentioned the importance of our athletes connecting with the community. I think to a, to a team, the very same thing we all do, we expect them to connect in a service program, in the community, in all sorts of ways. Uh, I will brag, Vicky, we have more athletic academic almirons.
I'll go back there and check our stats.
So, all in all, we're pleased to be here. Uh, we, we pour you to continue to support. As a rural community college president, uh, if we took away rural enrollment and we took away athletics, we're talking 20% of our enrollment is non-alien. So, those two things, which you've identified clearly as key policy issues, we appreciate your support tremendously. And, and you will notice if you look across the country, there are a number of technical schools that have full athletic programs, so they're not just at the company. Thank you all very much. Dean's doing an awesome job for us, and if you need any other information, we can make the move.
Yeah, and I would second that. Dean is doing a great job. He is just really the perfect person for that position. And one other comment, I guess, quick comment I would make, and I know several of you, you said the same thing. I, I, I know while I was at Shelton State and even a couple of other, uh, schools along my, my career, we found that for every scholarship athlete that we brought in, they brought three or four of their buddies with them at full freight. And I, and I know that comment was made, but sometimes that's missed. That's huge to enrollment. So, it, I, I, just again, I, I certainly echo all the great comments that you guys have made and appreciate the good presentation.
Thank you, guys. Your lady.
Okay, let's, uh, move on to our next item. I've asked David Walters, he's our, uh, State Director for Adult Education, to, to update you on some changes in the GED. Actually, there's some very exciting changes that are occurring, and, uh, this is such an important part of, of our mission as a community college system, that I want to make sure you stay updated on this.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chancellor, and good afternoon. Well, it's hard to follow athletics. After Dr. Branch got finished, I was ready to suit up and go play. So, that's very passionate. So, I'm going to share with you something I'm very passionate about. It's GEDs in the state of Alabama and what we've been able to accomplish over the last year or so, and there's some changes that we're very excited about that I can't wait to share with you. We've already put out a press release on this a few weeks ago. We've also put together frequently asked questions, and we sent that out to all of our programs across the state. We sent that out to all the colleges, all the partners, career centers, we sent it out to public libraries. We just blanketed the state with this information. I put it together in a packet for you, so you've got it, so everything I'm going to be sharing with you is in your packet. You have the press release. Also, it was picked up on several television stations throughout the state, and it was picked up nationally, and the Chancellor and I was quoted in a national publication. So, I put that in there for you as well. Uh, so, let me get started. This is the changes. So, on the left-hand side, I've got before, on the right-hand side, I've got the changes now. Okay? So, before, the passing for the GED test, uh, minimum passing score was a 150. Okay, there's four subject areas, okay? Reading, Language Arts, Mathematics, Social Studies, and Science. So, 150 was the minimum passing range when the test came out, January 1st, 2014. Now, like any good assessment, uh, company, they looked at the data, they looked at 18 months of the data, and, uh, they were able to do that because it's all computerized now, so they were able to get it in real time. Psychometricians took a look at it, they had conversations with other states out there, Alabama was one of them, and, uh, we were able to come up with a new cut score for the GED test. It's at 145 is now the passing rate. And here's the beauty of it, and I'm going to get into each individual one, but that cut rate is going to be retroactive. I'll tell you what that means in a few minutes. We also have a rate of 165 is saying that you're college-ready. That means that you could go into one of our community colleges really without development lift. You're ready for core classes. That's huge. And the big piece that I like more than any of it is 175 all the way up to 200 is now called college-ready plus credits. What that means is the American Council on Education is now saying that community colleges and even four-year institutions can use their recommendation to grant credits to GED recipients and have a score of 175 or more. So, they can get up to three college credits in Mathematics, three in Language Arts, uh, and three in, uh, Social Studies, and, uh, so forth, so a total of nine. So, that's huge, and I'm going to cover that in just a few minutes. All right. 145, basic minimum passing score. It takes effect immediately, okay? And it's also retroactive. What does that mean? It goes back to January 1st of 2014. So, nationally, that means 25,000 nationally more GEDs. For Alabama, it's 535. I've already talked to some states around us, except for Georgia. Georgia is a little over 1,700, but they serve a lot more people than we do. But that 535 puts us up to one of the higher states within our size compared to other states. Okay? So, that's great. This is going to take place again immediately, and GED Testing Service will be issuing credentials to all 535 people. They'll be getting those credentials electronically through their GED access account. Okay? Factoring in those 535, our pass rate for 2015 calendar year, this January 1st to December 31st of 2015, is now 88%. That puts us up to, uh, many other states, uh, and, and actually, more than most. So, we have one of the highest pass rates, we're very proud of that of any other state out there. So, 88% red pass rate. So, again, all of this, the students are being notified right now of that, and they're being notified through GED Testing Service, and the GED Testing Service will have all this in their system ready by March 1st. So, there's still some things they're working on the system, but they're going to hit and notify students of that. We've already handled a lot of calls in our state about that. So, this is great information for us. Um, let me show you the, the college-ready piece, uh, the readiness test piece. Score range is 165, 174, and this basically demonstrates that a student is ready to go into one of our college programs. They have demonstrated college readiness skills because GED has really, uh, aligned themselves with the college and career readiness standards, so they put different cut scores into this assessment. So, this assessment is unlike any other assessment on the market right now as far as being able to demonstrate college and career readiness. Here's the piece I was sharing with you about the college-ready and credit. Okay? Again, this is huge. Three credits in math, three credits in science, three credits in humanities, which is equivalent to Social Studies test, but they grant the credits as humanities, and then one credit in Language Arts English. Okay? And again, this is the American Council on Education recommending. And again, this is the American Council on Education recommendation, and colleges are used to following those recommendations for awarding college credit. Here's another change in the test. It's not a score change, but they did reduce the extended response on social studies. So what that means is there was a written portion, extended response portion, in the social studies piece. They took that out. So that's reducing the time from 90 minutes to 70 minutes on the social studies test. All right. Here's all the highlights I covered for you. So I put it on the slide together. I'm not going to cover them again, but I just wanted to make sure that you have all the information that I covered. Just another thing to remember, the test still is really measuring problem-solving and critical thinking, the skills that our employers out there really want. That's what it's measuring. All right. Switching gears real quick. Here's another exciting change, and we're working with GED Testing Service, and we're also working with parchment. Now, many of the colleges are probably familiar with parchment services. It's an online, computer-based credentialing entity. There are several of them in the United States, but parchment is by far the largest one, and they work with a lot of colleges nationally. GED Testing Service and parchment has aligned, and they have offered states the ability that they will now do the credentialing for states. So states do not have to do the credentialing themselves. Now, it's not going to be a national diploma. It's going to be an Alabama diploma, but we're going to be partnering with them, and they're going to be taking care of all of our credentialing in the future. What this means is a big cost savings for us and our state, and also giving our students something that A actually can get immediately, and it's not a hard copy of something. It's going to be an electronic transcript, an electronic diploma. We actually call these smart transcripts and diplomas because once it's in that electronic format, it can be sent to as many colleges, as many employers that the student wants to send it to, and every time an employer or a college opens it up, it automatically goes back to parchment, and it verifies that it's legitimate, and it gives a blue ribbon seal of approval to let the person that's opening up to know it's not been tampered with, okay? Right now, the state, if someone wants a, let's say they've lost their diploma, that happens all the time, or they can't find it, they have to come to us and they get a transcript. Right now, we charge them $10 for that transcript. If they need a diploma, that's another $10, okay? That's a hard copy, and when that's used at one of our colleges, okay? If they transfer somewhere else, guess what? They have to get another copy. So it adds up. This here, as soon as you take the test, you get this automatically. If you keep it, you will have it forever. If you end up losing it or something happens, then you can request a copy through GED Testing Service, and they will send it to you electronically. The cost will be $15, so it's $5 more, but again, it's electronic, and they'll be able to keep it as long as they keep it on a thumb drive, a cloud, or somewhere. So it's something they'll be able to keep, okay? We are the 22nd state to participate in this, so they've already done this transition with 21 other states. And let me take an opportunity to brag on the IT staff here at the college and also Alabama Supercomputer Authority. We, they told us this, I'm not making this up, and some of you all may have been in the room when they said this. GED Testing Service and parchment said, "We have never received the data in a format that we've been able to do in such a reduced time compared to other states." So I wanted to say that because what we've been able to send to them has been in a format that is unlike any format they've gotten from other states. Many other states have sent the information, they've had to go through to clean it up. And there's been, and when I'm talking about sending this information, it's a lot of information. We sent 2.5 million records, 2.5 million records electronically over the last three months. And this process is going to be wrapped up by the end of February, and we'll be able to roll this out in March, okay? So we're excited about that. They're also going to be coming and picking up all our hard copied records, and they're going to be scanning those in for us, and they're going to be putting them all into an electronic format. The cost of this is zero. They are not doing, they're not charging us any of this. They're doing it as a service through GED Testing Service, okay? So this is, this is great for our state. So I just wanted to share some of the exciting things that we're doing in adult education, and specifically GED that's going on in our state. So again, as a reminder, new test takers that take the test right now, they get one free electronic transcript, one free electronic diploma. They can also get a hard copy diploma as well. They have to request it, but they'll send it to them in the mail, okay? And it is an Alabama diploma. It still has the chancellor's signature on it, and it has our governor's signature on it, and has the board of trustees seal on it, okay? Any questions for? I'm not as passionate as Garrett is, but hopefully, hopefully I did okay. Any questions?
David, you know, probably over a year ago, we had some letters written, I think, from instructors that were concerned about the costs involved, you know? And at that point in the process, and I'm still learning, I didn't really have a good grasp of it. I think still the wise thing to do is stick with GED, and you might want to just expound on that a little bit.
Yeah, great question. Let me just, I guess, expand on that a little bit. There are several things going on here. The cost of the GED is $120 is the actual cost, but there's test centers that have to give the assessment, and there's a cost to giving that assessment. So the actual cost of the test is $80. Test centers get $40 of that. We offset that for our students that come through adult education by $100, okay? So it only costs an adult education student in the state of Alabama $20, okay? And the retest is also a reduced price as well. And so the retest is basically $10, and that's it, for as many sections as they need to retest. So it sounds like a lot, but now, when you look at those two other high school equivalency assessments, they don't have nearly the standards that GED has. And then also, they give you a price without folding the actual cost of the entire assessment, meaning not only what it costs, but the cost from the testing center perspective as well. So when they add that cost on, in many instances, the cost of those other assessments are around $100. So they're, they're very similar in cost, but they are not similar in the quality of the assessment. The GED is the only one that has college-ready and college-ready plus credits. Now, the others may come out later on with something like that, and we'll take a look at it. But right now, I think we need to stay the course on the GED, and this is the right thing for us to do. And also, 40 other states are staying the course on the GED as well. So that tells you something.
I'd agree.
So, but great question. Good job. I will provide you more information as information comes along with all the changes and everything that's occurring, so we'll make sure that you're aware of everything going on. You have my card in there as well. Please call me if you have any questions. We've also put in there a frequently asked question for educators and a frequently asked question for students, because you may get some questions directly from teachers or from students. So you've got the information in there, and I'll get to do the scan through it, and they'll give you the answer. And if not, you call me, and I'll give you the answer. How's that? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Well, I think as we're all well aware, the session is in full swing. We have legislators that are working across the street night and day, and I have asked Jimmy Baker to give us a monthly update while they're in session. So I'll ask him to come forward and kind of update, update us on what's, what's happened thus far.
Chancellor, while Jimmy's walking up there, I want to apologize for David, and you can go ahead and look down at your book and shake your head, but somehow or another, he bragged on the IT department and the Alabama Supercomputer. Whatever happened to our internet at the Shelton satellite campus?
I know, in fact, I talked to Vermont. I don't think he's in here right now, but he does have an update on that, so.
Sorry, David. You tore his cab off.
I actually think they have an date certain.
Yes.
It's not on your schedule, but it's on there.
Last I heard, it was January 7th.
I don't know about that. I don't know. I've heard so many presentations today that I've gone too short on some of them. But we've had some very different ones. And I do want to, if I have a point of personal improvement, will you let me have that for a second?
Please, absolutely.
I sat and I listened to Susan's presentation. Excellent piece of work, was my opinion, and I think of everyone that I've talked to. What's wrong with that is that we must convey that message to the community, and we just haven't done a good job of that. I think we're going to have to reconcile ourselves to the fact that that information... See, I think there are a lot of people out there who the chancellor has been hit with. I've been hit with, and I'm sure you have, who, there's some people out there who are absolutely certain they could make all of this happen in the next six months.
Yep.
And I suspect if we did something like that, we would have a disaster. I think we need to step forward, provide information, because I'm sure that our presidents and other people involved in our colleges are getting hit with the same questions that you're getting hit with. And I just think it behooves us to think long and hard and sit down and figure out how we convey that message. I appreciate the work she did. I think it should serve as a base for us to move forward and to try to provide more information. She told me a lot of stuff I didn't even know. It's scary. As soon as there's a first set of numbers developed by the legislature, you will have copies of those. The chancellor, or the chancellor and myself or one of the other of us, we probably had seven or eight meetings with the budget folks, in particular, the chairman of the House Ways and Means. That's where the first budget is coming from. And I would have to say, and I think the chancellor would say the same thing, we've talked about it, our plea has been well received.
I agree.
I do believe this, that the part of the legislative body that is in the business of providing leadership on the budgets, I believe they are committed to recognizing that this is the year for the community colleges to step up, and for them to step up and help us go forward. And we're going to push that. We've been pushing that both individually and collectively. The chancellor, I know he, we had to run over here because he had to be at Ways and Means this morning to make a presentation, made a presentation last week. It's been well received. And I just want to encourage you, as soon as we get some numbers, with those legislators that you as a board of trustee member have some influence with, or just acquaintance with, that you relay the messages, because we can't deliver in this state what the expectation is unless we have some resources. We have schools right now that serve areas that just absolutely are underserved because there is not money available, and in particularly in the workforce area. And I know that I'm not supposed to neglect the parts and all of that, and chancellor, you heard that this morning?
Yes.
But still, I do know this, that the mission that has been identified primarily by the legislative body and by the community of the state is we need to have more trained people so they can get jobs making a living wage. So please, as we go through this, the chancellor and I have a meeting this afternoon at 3:00. We talked by phone about the piece of legislation that we kind of are really focused on. We had submitted the piece of legislation that does the three things, creates the corporate, the ability to have a corporate entity. It also deals with the issue of students-first, tenured, continuing service status. That's really the only hangup that we've encountered so far, and I think to a great degree, a lot of that was a lack of understanding of the attorney who is working in the pro temp, the president pro temp of the Senate. I talked to him yesterday. He said, "Y'all get this worked out today," and we were meeting with him at 3:00 to try to resolve that so we can move the bill forward. Generally, I've had good response from those people that we've talked with about the bill. We still haven't introduced it because the closer we can have it to what we feel like can pass, the better off we'll be as we go through it. So I'll keep you posted on that as we go forward. That is, to me, right now, is that and the budget are the two major pieces of legislation that we're looking at. There are some others, and I know some of our people that were going to talk about the data system, the data bank that was being collected, the longitudinal data bank. I had to go back to a legislative meeting to report there, so, but we have, we have provided you the pieces of legislation that are in particular related to education. Now, the one piece that you have dealing with the apprenticeship, we still are toying with some idea, and some of the presidents and I have talked today about that, and just to what extent we can move more and more of the education community into that. And I thought Representative John Knight made a good comment this morning. I thought he was very much on target, and chancellor, as you recall vividly, yesterday, he made that same comment and made that point very strongly, that we must be aggressive in making sure that every agency who thinks they have all the right answers, and really most of the time they're chasing money, is not diminishing the influence of the community college system in providing the programs that we need to be providing. And we're looking at the apprentice bill from that standpoint. We quite frankly support an apprentice bill. We just want to make sure that we are a participant in the decision-making. There is language in that bill that allows that. It allows the board of trustees and our year designe to participate in the room making part, but we might even want to be a little stronger than that as we go along. I'll be happy to respond, but that's kind of a short sweep where we are. As soon as we have numbers, I'll get numbers to you. The first run of a budget, you'll know about it. And as we go forward with our other bill we're negotiating on, I'll keep you posted.
I'm probably going to ask you a question, put you on the spot here, because I don't, I don't know exactly where this bill is, but I know I've had several questions about this, and I've had questions as well, and that's the guns-on-campus issue. And I don't know whether you can give us an update. I'm very concerned about that.
Well, we should be concerned about it, I think, and it certainly would create a problem with our policy. And, and I would tell you, and I certainly, maybe I ought to be a little more reserved, but I don't think it's going to go anywhere.
Okay.
I'll keep you posted if I see it gaining strength or any kind of legs, but it's, I know there's a population of people that really wants that, but I don't think there's enough clout in the legislative body right now on that issue. But it is one that bears watching, and we are monitoring it, but it is, it's just not something that we need to be involved with, a supportive of, I guess, not involved with. If it's going to pass, I really want to be involved, but it just is a little scary to me.
It is.
No, it's not a little scary.
It's a lot scary.
I'll be happy to respond to any questions you have. I just, I don't want to keep dragging it out, and I got to go meet with the legislature just to be honest with you.
Thanks for what you're doing. Appreciate it. Chancellor, thanks for what you do for the legislature. I know it's not easy.
That's our, that's our program.
Anyone have anything else to add today?
Please, be great.
I'll just take a few minutes. I had the opportunity to attend the American Association of Community Colleges Pathways Conference, and I thank Dr. Colerick for inviting me, and I'm going to brag on Wallace State. I understand there are like 1,200 institutions or community colleges throughout the United States. 200-plus applied for this program, and Wallace State was one of 30 that were recognized and selected. And so again, commend Wallace State. And there were colleges from Washington, Texas, New York, all over the country. Anyway, very impressive program. But the gist of it, they wanted to, you know... impressive program. But the gist of it, they wanted to, you know, I guess, provide some instruction on, on developing guideways, pathways for our children so we can increase the graduation rate. And I had the pleasure of meeting with some of the board members of some of these other institutions. And they have actually incorporated in their policy information of how we can be supportive in regards to infrastructure, policy, and procedures. So, I know Ron, you're the chairperson of our policies committee. Alamo State was one that had a pretty strong policy. And I recommend maybe reviewing that, see if we can incorporate some things there. But anyway, it was a very, very good program. And again, thank you for inviting me. One book that they had recommended was Redesigning America's Community Colleges. And I think this is a good read. It's, was written by Thomas Bailey, Shannon Jaggers, and David Jenkins. And so, again, hopefully the board can receive copies of this.
Actually, we already have copies for you. And you'll, you'll be getting those in the, in the next month or so. So...
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Milton. Appreciate you taking the time to go to that, participate in it. And Dr. Karlowics for including the trustees in that. Thank you very much. Anything else to come before? Board, any comments or anything? Chancellor? If not, we'll stand adjourned.
Thank you all.
Thanks for your participation.